We're going to call the regular meeting of the Lepore County Council for April 26, 2021 at 6:00 PM to order. When we get done, I would like everybody to stand for a moment of silence for our county historian Fran Eddie Schultz and also for Jim Rice, who passed away recently. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic that we stand in, one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Before we do the roll, we'd also like to send our best wishes out to Councilman Terry Gardner and a speedy recovery. Hope you get well soon, Terry. Mr. Auditor, roll please.
Councilman. I'm on, but I'm dead.
His mic isn't working?
Sorry.
He says he can hear you.
I'm on. Oh, you can hear me? Okay. Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Present.
We know Councilman Garner. Not here. Councilman Novak.
Present.
Councilman Yagalski.
Present.
Councilwoman Grammerosa.
Present.
And Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Six of seven present.
Thank you. I thought Terry was on. He's not.
I've asked him to unmute.
Okay. Terry here? Thank you. Terry is on, but he's not.
I'm sorry.
Terry's present, he just muted.
Mr. Garner's here. Okay.
Next item is approval of the April 26, 2021 agenda. I don't think we have any.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Yagalski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. There's people waiting. Approval of the March 2022, 2021 meeting minutes. Everybody have a chance to read your minutes?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes, March 22nd, 2021 minutes.
Second by Mr. Yagalski. Any questions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Public comment. Public comment is now open. Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Anybody from the public? Public comment is now closed. Department head reports. Any department heads?
Please state your name.
My name is John Boyd, Sheriff of Lepore County. Good evening. I'm here before you tonight because several months ago, the sheriff's office wrote a grant through the healthcare foundation of Lepore for a patrol boat for Lake Patrol. When we authored the grant, it was, we were not told that it was a matching grant. However, we authored it anyway. Last week, I received a telephone call, as did President Novak, from the healthcare foundation that said that they would like to look at the grant potentially as a matching grant. We're looking to replace a 1989 20-foot Boston Whaler that is outdated and is in dire need of replacement. And with that said, I'd like permission from you this evening to move forward with pursuing the grant, knowing that there is a matching component to it. We also know that we would like to trade in that 1989 Boston Whaler. However, with that being said, we can't do it until we get a new boat in its place. And whatever we would receive from that boat, once we received a new boat, we could then put that toward the cost of a new boat. We have no idea how much money the healthcare foundation is asking for in matching money, but I'm here before you tonight to let you know that. We would have come before you earlier had we known it was a matching grant, but we didn't know that. Mr. Novak, I don't know if there's anything you can add to that?
No, I had a conversation with Maria because her board wanted to know, you know, how come, how come we're not doing a matching grant? And I said, well, you know, nobody's necessarily opposed to a matching grant. And I think it's definitely needed. I think the healthcare foundation is very much on board with the fact, with all the lakes in Lepore County and everything that's going on around here and the great job you guys do patrolling the lakes. So that's why I asked you to come here tonight, just so we can talk more about it.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagalski.
I make a motion that we approve the next step of proceeding.
Absolutely.
Motion by Mr. Yagalski, seconded by Mr. Cunningham.
I do have a comment. Do we have an idea what the cost of a new vessel will be?
Yes, $58,000.
Thank you.
Was there also some money in there for overtime?
No, all of our pay for those that patrol the lakes come from the Department of Natural Resources.
Okay. I knew she said, I know Maria had said something.
That's a separate grant that we write, and there's no matching money. That all comes from the state of Indiana.
Great.
Question?
What's that?
I know Mike just asked of how much, but I couldn't hear how much the sheriff said.
He said $58,000.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Other department heads?
Good evening. Good evening. Okay, I know every time I see you, I'm asking for money, not that tonight's going to be any exception, but I thought I'd give you a little bit of a rundown of what I've been doing. Starting in January, I attended the new department head training in Indianapolis for department heads. That was like a two-day, or 24-hour seminar. I've sent two candidates to MDI Training School in Indianapolis. One has finished her training and her externship, and she's in the field now. The other had to retest on a couple of the modules, so we expect her to be out in the field by next month. This is bringing the total number of deputies in the field to now five. We recently just lost a deputy. I'm continuing working with the child fatality review team, which we meet quarterly with that. I attend the drug-free partnership meetings. I meet with the drug task force quarterly, and I continue working with opioid fatality review team, which through Health Link, we are reimbursed $1,250 a month for facilitating these meetings and gathering the information. So, you know, we're putting that in a fund that we can, you know, help support ourselves a little bit. We have changed over our reporting method to the Indiana Violent Death Registry, which is an online reporting system. They can pull off all of our drug overdose, our homicides, our suicides, freeing up us not having to turn those into them quarterly or even monthly. For that, we received $4,300 in supplies, which were body bags, PPE, a portable refrigerator for samples, a safe to store valuables, and tablets for other deputies. I'm also working to set up with Indiana State Department of Health, sun unexpected infant death registry system reporting, for which we will be compensated $4,400 for emergency or office supplies. To date, we have responded to 115 deaths in Lepore County. We are slowly moving into our new office, and the new cots that you have approved are ordered. Been a little busy.
Thank you. Mr. Yagalski.
Your predecessor was trying to work with the opioid group about this coloring book for kids, supposed to get introduced with not UCor using drugs and that type of thing. And not to, maybe if you can still find out, I have two social clubs that want to donate to that function.
Okay.
So I don't know if you know anything about it, but they.
I don't, but I'll certainly find out.
Can we reach out to Bob? If he's got time to hold it.
I know. If I can get him off the beach long enough, I'll see what I can do.
But anyway, that'd be nice if you could.
That'd be great.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads?
Just a quick update. I wanted to come and say thank you. Our office is gorgeous. We moved back in last Monday, last Wednesday. The scanning room is finished. We have hired part-time scanners. That is set to begin on May 3rd. And we've also learned that once those documents have been scanned into the system, those paper copies, I don't have to put them on a list, I don't have to wait, we can destroy them immediately, which is getting these file cabinets emptied out, getting the weight off the floors. I'm sure Larry Levandowski will be thrilled. So it's kind of what we're up to.
Definitely. Thank you. Any other department heads?
Good evening, President Novak, council persons. I just want to give a quick update on what came through yesterday about some of the flooding issues that have been occurring and getting that water moved out down Kingsbury Creek. So earlier in the month, I had directed our engineer Jay Sullivan to draw up some plans for getting some pipe up there, going from Kingsbury Creek up to the affected area, tying in with a drain that they have up there to be able to get some of that water out of there to address the flooding issues within the pond and it's affecting some road issues. So that came back, and I'll forward a copy onto you now that we have it. But the good news is, we're looking at about 8,000 feet of pipe. We can do that under a current contract from DEPCO. It looks like, since we're already contracted with them for pipes, the county would theoretically be buying the pipe and then bidding out the installation of it, up to the bedding of it. Then we could have county highway come in and whatever issues that needed to be addressed as far as finishing off a little bit of paving can be done by highway. So we're hoping that something like this is going to be underneath the $500,000 mark to be able to finally address that, put that to bed, which is good news. So I wanted to prep you guys on that now as something that we're hoping can be kind of finalized and move forward with for hopefully the next regular scheduled council meeting.
Question. Is there any possibility that we're close enough to a bridge that that can come out of the Kuhn Bridge Fund?
Yes, absolutely. I've looked into that, and that should be able to come out of the bridge fund, according to State Board of Accounts and where it's emptying into, and that will make a little bit of stuff there, so when it empties into Kingsbury Creek, it's appropriate and for the bank and everything else. So yeah, definitely, from all intents purposes, including what's referenced by the State Board of Account, it can come out of the bridge fund, which is good news.
Mr. Yagalski.
Commissioner, I came in late for that meeting you guys had about the water subdivision. Another one that just caught my eye a couple days ago was Longuts Road right off by Michigan City, where you're going to Trail Creek, right off Woodland. Are you familiar with that? So the mayor came to us, Michigan City, I'm guessing, I don't know, two administrations, nine, 10 years ago, water problems. It's one of the roads, it's Michigan City County, the Trail Creek, multi-use road by the three groups. And wanting a quarter million dollars to fix this water problem. But lo and behold, we're building on this water problem. So I don't know if you get a chance, I mean, all we're doing is like we had mentioned, I think you mentioned, I think we had, you know, we continue our own problems there. And that, there's been water flooding problems there since I remember in that area. If you get a chance, I'd like to see if you could take a look at it and find out what they're, you know, because I don't understand how the wetland groups or that allow this to happen. There's no retention pond, there's nothing out there.
Has that come before the planning commission yet, or?
Well, the lots clear cut, and there's surveyor stakes out there, and I mean, it's.
It's being built.
Okay, so it must have been approved last year.
And even if it's under the cities, then it's still a problem, because we own the adjoining, the county owns the adjoining property with residents. I'm talking about waters flooding their front yards.
I think that's city.
That's city. Is that also the bridge that City took over?
Yes, that's City on the corner, right? But as you're going down Longuts, the second, and third, and fourth homes are county. Those are the ones that are flooding out, along with the, if you go on the opposite side, the north side, there's the entrance to the apartments. That area is flooding out. And so we've had water problems all along. Now, you know, all we're doing is introducing more in an area that can't handle the property in the first place.
All right, I appreciate that. I got a couple more questions for you on that, if you want to do it afterwards, so I don't take up your time here.
Close to Mr. DiMartino's office over in that area.
Right across the street.
And you're seeing that too there?
Yes.
Do you know the disturbance there when they did it? Is that more than an acre? What they're doing?
What they're doing right now, it's got to be an acre. I mean, they clear cut the whole corner.
Okay, yeah, because if it is, that's something that MS4 can directly take a look at as well. Yeah, if you want to shoot me a little bit of that information, shoot me an email, and I'll get with the MS4.
If I could go back to my records, I see, I give you the date, we can look at the, they came for us over a quarter million dollars. We ended up, we spent a little less than that, did it ourself, but there's ditches go along that way.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other department heads? Any other department? Hearing none. Next item, liaison reports. Mr. Rosenbaum.
I'll keep it quick. Been in constant communication with my liaison positions, the department heads, attended the RDC meeting and FMEC meetings, as well as some Zoom calls. The ones that, there'll be some people speaking tonight, we'll hear more from them. So thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Cunningham?
Mr. Rosenbaum left one off that was very important. He and I and Mr. Haney also were in attendance at the civic auditorium for the bypass meeting. And a lot of options and maps and so forth, and it was very interesting. My other reports are primarily with conferences with the community correction and Juneau Services Center.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Yagalski.
Yeah, we just had a meeting with the data, and just so everybody knows, everything that's on the agenda, it's been approved by the department.
Thank you. Councilwoman Grammerosa?
I've attended all the meetings corresponding to the departments that I'm a liaison with, and everything is going just according to plan. So we're working on the sewers in Rolling Prairie, and everything's just moving along.
Thank you. Mr. Mullenhour?
Couple things. First, I attended the Lepore County Redevelopment Commission meeting, and on April 7th, I attended the Lepore County Council/Commissioner workshop pertaining to the Meadowview subdivision, their water and flooding issue. On April 14th, I attended a solid waste district board meeting. And on April 19th, I'm not a liaison for the community corrections, but I had an opportunity to Zoom on that, so I did. So I attended that. I see Director Ms. Brown's on tonight for some ceiling replacement and maybe some other things, I'm not sure, but I know that was discussed during the meeting. And April 20th, I attended the Lepore County Board of Health quarterly meeting. And during the month, I also, Director, EMS Director Andrew McGuire gave me a call, and we discussed some of the things that he's got on the agenda for tonight also. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullenhour. I have attended the weekly COVID call that I host on Thursdays at 3 o'clock. It's actually been going on for a little over a year, and there's a lot of information on there. Courthouse weekly call on Monday mornings at 10 o'clock for updates on the courthouse. Everything is going good over there. Weekly redevelopment commission, which Mr. Mullenhour and Mr. Rosenbaum are both on there. And then the health department, we do a weekly call with the health department and the commissioners, the councils all invited there, just for updates on the vaccine clinic. The vaccine clinic will be moving from the fairgrounds to the old Lepore Hospital. I think we're shooting for the 27th of May. I'm looking at Larry, because he's the one moving them. So the 27th of May, and they should be there for approximately four months. So that's what we're doing, because we had to move out of the fairgrounds because of the fair coming up. So we went ahead and moved them a little bit early, so we're not rushed. And there's a lot of things that we're doing out there, improvements we're trying to make in the meantime, so. But that, that's it. Oh, Terry Gardner, did you want to talk? Is he gonna, is he gonna be able to talk? Or did you know?
I didn't catch what you said, Randy.
Oh, did you have anything to report? I'm sorry.
I didn't have a chance to speak with anybody.
All right. Thank you, Terry. Correspondence? Mr. Auditor? Any correspondent?
We have no correspondents.
Ordinances and resolutions, none. New business? Ranger Jeremy Sabecki, grant being awarded to the Lepore County Park Department for Bloom Park Park Improvement.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank whoever put me first on the agenda. I don't know if parks has ever been first on the agenda, so that's a good thing. Thank you.
It must have been a typographical, it won't happen again, Jeremy, trust me. I'm just kidding.
Anyway, yeah, so back in February, I came to you and pitched going for this grant to get a playground, accessible playground at Bloom County Park to replace one that was basically outdated and falling apart, with the understanding that we would, the county would hopefully provide $70,000 to pave the parking lot, and that my park foundation would pay for the restroom and septic. So we were awarded the grant, which is exciting. We're starting to get, working on the planning portions of that. We just found out about this, you know, after the deadline to get in to ask for permission to, for money from the council. So I think that's why I'm here, is just to announce that hopefully the next meeting, I'll be able to do that. Is that the case?
Right. Is that for the, you said for the $70,000 for paving?
Yes.
Right. Definitely. Yeah, we'll get that on our next agenda. We, I mean, we can't authorize it right now. You're asking for an additional appropriation, aren't you?
Yeah, that would be an additional appropriation.
Yeah. So we'll add that to our next agenda. But congratulations.
That's what I figured. I knew it'd be too late, but I just wanted to update you on the grant and that.
Right. Definitely. I mean, we did move you up on the agenda. You should be happy with that.
That's moving in the right direction.
Definitely. We appreciate the grant. That was, that's great news, and Bloom Park should be looking really good here if the season comes up. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Next item is consider approval from council president's authorization to hire public health clerk position in Lepore County Health Department. This is just a replacement for some of. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Mullenhour. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is permission for prosecuting attorney to hire a temporary process server for the child support 4D office and to hire an intern to work for the summer in the Lepore Office.
Good evening, Mr. Novak. Can you hear me today?
Good evening, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm asking for permission for our process server, and I apologize not being in there. I had to go out of town, and so I'm on my way back. So not able to be there present in person to present this, but we have money in our budget already, line items for $5,000 for the process server and Dwayne Miller. And part of this is that we, because we figure that we're going to have a glut of cases to serve and processing. I know that we just had the situation where the sheriff has, you know, two of them that used to do the process and helping out with that have retired. So this is just for that, for the permission and to pay them $13 an hour. And then the next one is for the intern to allow us to hire an intern at $10 an hour. None of them will have benefits.
And this is money in your budget, you said?
Both of these are line item. We have $5,000 in the 4D office for an extra hire, and we have $3,265 for an extra hire item in our prosecuting attorney budget.
Thank you, Prosecutor Lake. What's your preference?
Does prosecutors think that that'll be enough money then for the year for them?
Yeah, I'm not, it's, we're just going to use whatever we have in the budgets, what we're going to use, not anymore. So we're not asking for, we will not be coming back for any additional appropriation. It's basically, this is a used $5,000 total for the year, and that's it. And then the $3,265, so that's the total amount that we'll be using in our budget.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mullenhour. Second by Mr. Cunningham. And the questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item, Lepore County Maintenance, Rolling Prairie EMS Highway Project.
Can I?
Sure.
I thought there was email.
Hang on a second. Microphone.
Yeah, I thought there were some emails going back and forth about the replacement of a tax sale deputy grant clerk position in the auditor's office, and I don't see it on here, so it's not on here. I guess we'll have to get permission, or you'll have to grant permission, and we'll have to prove it at the next.
I must apologize of all the positions to leave off the agenda, the Councilman Novak, President Novak, you authorized us to begin the process. In fact, we have someone ready to start on Monday, but we left off the agenda, the, I'm embarrassed to say, the tax sale clerk slash grant administrator position that you had authorized. And so we would ask for council approval on that position. I don't know if you.
Second by Mr. Yagalski, second by Mr. Cunningham. Is there any other question?
It is a replacement.
Right. The replace, yeah.
Can we also get a motion to amend the agenda to add that, please?
Okay, before we, before that motion, we need to.
You want to amend the agenda first?
Yes, so let's amend the agenda, and then.
So your motion to amend the agenda?
Well, I'm the one who did it originally, so we'll amend the agenda for it.
Okay.
And then.
By Mr. Rosenbaum to amend the agenda.
And then Mr. Yagalski seconded.
Second by Mr. Yagalski to amend the agenda.
Could you repeat the motion, please? I couldn't hear very well.
Yes, the motion is to amend the agenda, so we can put under new business the ability to hire, hey, give me a second.
It's consider approval for council president's authorization for the auditor to hire a tax sale.
Sale deputy.
Tax sale clerk.
Clerk.
Right.
Slash grant.
For an opening that occurred there. Somebody transferred into another department, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yep. So motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Yagalski to amend the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Now.
Now, there was those two.
For you to get permission to hire.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagalski, second by Mr. Cunningham for permission to hire. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
I thank you for your indulgence.
Glad you caught that. All right. Next item, Lepore County Maintenance, Rolling Prairie and EMS Highway Department. State your name, sir.
Good evening, members of council. Larry Levandowski, Director of Facilities. I'm here for you, along with, Commissioner Haney is here today, this evening, along with the EMS Director and also Director of the Highway. As you know, we've been working on this EMS Highway project for over a year, trying to get it moving forward. So tonight, we're coming before you, looking for motion of support to keep this moving, this project moving. We've, about a year ago, we came before you, we were estimating it to be about $1.6 million project. We've gone through it. I'll admit that I've tried to keep this price as low as possible, to keep it within. We've met with the Highway Department, we've also met with the EMS about the needs that they were going to have to have inside there, you know, for the, their beds, cots, the refrigerators, everything that would be needed, we started working through. This project has steadily gone up. We're, you know, I've kept my budget prices pretty tight. I was estimating about $1.9 million. $1.9 million. That's being very, very safe and conservative. I'll admit it. Um, probably by the time we're all said and done, we may be closer to a 2.3, you know, with this, this complete project.
Because of the cost of construction and everything.
Construction materials are going up steadily. Every, every time you turn around, something's gone up. And it's just, it's hard. Right now, like I said, I put a budget together until we can get it out to bid and see where people are at and get someone to hold a price to it. It's, you know, it's hard to say exactly where this is going to come in at. So, like I said, um, we're here, we're here before you this evening to get, um, a motion of support to keep moving on this project. And then we can come back to you with, you know, once we get it out there. Our goal right now is to have this project before the commission, commission to, um, open bids on July 7th, so that we can be breaking ground in Aug, sometime in August. That, like I say, it's a goal that we're setting. We know it's a tight goal right now and it's, but it's a lot of work to be done in a short order of time.
Thank you, Larry, counsel.
I'll make a motion of support to go forward with this project.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Molnar. Any other?
Second.
Yep, I got you. Any other questions or comments?
Okay.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
One at a time. All those opposed?
Nay.
Get that. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Next item is Lepore County Clerk requesting a commitment to maintain electronic poll books.
Mr. President, motion to approve. Um, this is going to make big effect of securing our elections. Um, it's well needed and it's going to be a good communications tool.
Absolutely.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Igalski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Are there any other questions or comments?
Heather's in a state of shock.
Uh, yeah.
All right.
It's a program.
You have a question, Connie?
Yeah, I would like to, um, to just ask you, like, how do you think that this is going to benefit us? If you can explain it a little bit to us. I, I can do that. So in January, I started to, to really look at the electronic poll books. I learned that the Secretary of State's office basically was, was trying to help counties without electronic poll books to get them. Um, but, uh, I think of maybe a week, week and a half ago, I received a phone call, basically, it was an email, basically stating that they were going to send us a contract to sign. Um, I asked for a preview of that contract. And again, I, I do not have a number. I don't know. We are asking, we've said we, we're going to be looking at 70 electronic poll books. Um, it's my understanding that that's what they are going to provide. And so at that point, I got on, I got on the commissioner's agenda so that I could come here, because when I looked at that preview of the contract, it does state that, that we're going to maintain these poll books. And I know that there's a cost involved with that. Um, the NO Inc. estimate that I handed to you guys, um, this is $190,000 worth of electronic poll books and equipment. We are, it is my understanding right now that we are getting this at zero cost, which is incredible. Um, I've worked with Darlene Hale. We were actually sitting in my office this morning going over this and a lot of the additional expenses for the future, we, we will not need. She's got all of the, the MiFi's, the hotspots, everything we're going to need. So we don't, we don't need any of this. Um, our, our cost to maintain these will begin in 2023 and that cost will be $13,500. So this, this is going to help us. We, I know that Nelson Picardo has, he, he has secured a grant for a mobile voting unit. Um, everyone's talked about vote centers. None of that happens without these books. We can't do any of that. So this, this is definitely, if we can move, if we can make that move to the vote centers, then we're not paying $1,100 per precinct twice a year. I mean, these are, these are costs that add up.
So what do you estimate this is going to save us?
Um, well.
Cause you're going to save on not having as many people at the polling place?
And not having quite as many locations, but everyone will be able to vote anywhere, anywhere that we would have a vote center. That's how a vote center works. So it looks like in 2020, for the general election, um, to staff 54 locations, we spent $61,020. Uh, we're looking, I would say at, if we had 30 vote centers, which is probably way high, um, you're looking at $33,000. Wonderful. To pay those poll workers. So this, this is going to be, it's going to be a savings in the long run.
I like that it also includes the, uh, three-year software.
Yes.
Uh, upgrade. May.
Absolutely. When they're portable like this, you can literally take them into a grocery store or Myers or Walmart or anywhere you want to. They can vote in those places if possible, right?
You don't have a voting machine.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the, this is the book that has your, where you sign your name?
Literally, you could take a voting machine. Just like they're doing with the shots now. They're moving shots into.
Right.
Places where people are going to go.
Uh, my favorite thing about this mobile voting unit is we can take this to apartment complexes where transportation is an issue. We can take it to, it may be, maybe an assisted living facility. There, you know, I'm sure our election board, we're going to make sure that this is handicapped, accessible. Um, but again, we can't, it's no good without these books. So this is a really big savings.
Right. Any other questions or comments?
Um, can I, this is Darlene Hale. Can I just say something real quick? Now, the e-poll books will work with, you know, our current system, whether we go to vote centers or not. Um, Heather has not approached the commissioners yet to get that approval. You know, we would like to hope that they would, but, you know, either way, the electronic poll books will work.
Right. Thank you. No other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appropriations, transfers and requests. Lepore County Sheriff requesting permission to spend not to exceed $51,956 for firearm, from firearms account for less lethal shotguns and molded stocks and forearms.
Foreends.
Foreends, pistol rifles and optics, $51,956. Permission to spend.
Motion to approve the permission to spend?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Graham Rosa. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
I have a comment that, um, I have a comment that, um, there shouldn't be any question on how bad this is needed. I think, um, it's, you know, more than ever right now, we're seeing more of a need for, for less lethal weapons, um, in any law enforcement agency. So I think, um, just kudos to, uh, the sheriff and, and his people for, um, getting this to come to fruition and, and, uh, asking for this permission. I think it's money well spent.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is, uh, Lepore County Drug Free Partnership requesting permission to draw upon the Community Drug Free Fund for amounts accumulated between January 2020 and March 2021 for organizations serving Lepore County.
Yes, sir. Gentlemen and, um, council people, I'm Mickey Webb with the Lepore County Drug Free Partnership. We're requesting permission to draw from the Drug Free Community Fund, um, based on Indiana Code 52-11 for the amounts of dollars collected between the periods of January 2020 through March 31st, 2021. These funds are used in the areas of prevention, treatment, justice and administration to Lepore County organizations and are recommended for allocation based on a peer review process by substance use professionals. So we request your permission, um, for those funds to be transferred and allocated to Lepore County organizations.
And this, this is an annual, this is an annual thing that.
This is an annual request. Um, it has been set up by statute for over 30 years, um, that these dollars that are collected then go back into the Lepore County community based on a process that is identified.
And it, there's about 64,000, what did I tell you? 160?
160, something, yeah, and 18 cents.
In that fund right now.
Um, what we were advised in that fund was currently 59,308, but that was the most recent figure I had received.
All right, that's okay. We're good with that.
Yeah, okay. We'll come back for more money, Randy.
Mickey, do you have a list of the organizations that you're giving it to?
Uh, yes, we are recommending that the organizations in, under criminal justice, uh, include the Lepore County Youth Service Bureau and Lepore Problem Solving Court. In treatment to the Open Door Adolescent Health Center at Michigan City High School to be used for treatment services for students who have substance use concerns. And in the prevention field to Health Link, a federally qualified health center for prevention materials, Dune Brook Child Advocacy Center for substance abuse prevention materials for families that they work with. Also to Artistic Recovery, which is a prevention model using the arts, and Intrepid Phoenix, a prevention model that it utilizes physical fitness and a 12-step program. So we are requesting permission, um. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make a motion to approve.
All right.
I'll second.
Motion by Mike Molnar, seconded by Mike Rosenbaum. Any other questions?
I wanted to ask you, where, how are these funds collected?
Uh, through drug addiction fees that are collected by the courts.
Okay.
From offenders.
Any other questions or comments?
Good to see you again.
You too. Thank you.
Wait, we haven't voted yet. Don't walk away. That's a bad sign. No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you for all you do. We appreciate it. Thank you. Next item is Lepore County Maintenance requesting a motion of support, seeking additional funding to upgrades at the fairgrounds, $125,000, Larry Levandowski.
Hello again, members of council. Larry Levandowski, Director of Facilities. Um, so I'm coming before you today for this evening to seek an additional $125,000 for the FMEC at the fairgrounds. Um, over, over this past year, you know, last year we were very, it was very quiet and slow out there. But over this past year with things, this, things have loosened up a little bit. We've seen an increase of vendors wanting to utilize the fairgrounds and stuff. So with that being said, we've, uh, we had a budget set up of how, over the next, next three years of how we wanted to do things, but it seems like we need to do some of these things a little bit sooner than later. Um, some of the things include some of the bleacher seating needs to get upgraded. Uh, there's upgrades within electrical that needs to happen, some upgrades in lighting, you know, throughout the grounds. So, um, we're, we've kind of put the money that we already gotten and started utilizing it for other needs that needed to be done out there that was appropriated earlier in the year. So we're going to, we're looking at what needs, these other needs are that are needed to be done a little sooner than later. And we're trying to get some of these done so that we can utilize the grounds a little bit better. I know, um, Susie Carpenter is here today and I think she might want to speak a little bit about what's, some of the things that are going on out there and what's happening. So to kind of explain a little bit why we're needing to get these done a little bit sooner.
Larry, while you're there, could, you know, I'm new to the council. In January, could you, uh, bring me up to speed here approximately how much the county has put into the fairgrounds since this was set up in 2018?
I would say we probably write about $500,000.
I think it is five.
Right in that area?
We actually have that number here.
I'm sorry.
I have that number. I was asked that by a member of the public that, earlier today. Um, since it was set up, the amounts, deleted that text, it was 125,000 in 2018, 125,000, 250,000 the first year, 125,000 the next year. It was 2018, 250, 2019, 125, 2020, 125, and 2021 to date, 125 for a total of, um, 625,000, um, since the beginning of 2018 plus this request tonight.
The first year though, they approved 250,000.
Two separate tranches of 125 each, early in the year and later in the year.
Yep. Great. Yeah. So with that, yeah.
So this will bring it to 625.
No, it is, it, it is 625 year to date, including the 125 you authorized earlier this year already. This is an additional 125.
Correct.
Got you.
So in talking of these figures, when, when this was created in 2018, wasn't it created where it was going to be a $250,000 yearly stipend that we were going to give? And then we were going to do 125 at the beginning of the year, 125 in the mid, mid part of the year when it was set up in, in, in 2018?
I'd like to say yes, and I like how you're thinking, but it was, it was a one, it was a 125. It was a 125 is what it was with the, the idea that if there was something more than we'd have to come back or whatever, but.
But they would, they would come back every year, but wasn't it set up for 250?
It was set, it was originally set up the first year for 250 with 125 one year and 125 the next year.
Okay.
So that's how that 250, that's how that 250 figure came up.
I'm Susie Carpenter, Director of Business and Events for the new Lepore County Fairgrounds and Events Center. I was brought into this position last September to help develop and grow the grounds. As you can imagine, uh, we've been very busy getting this new organization put together and making plans for the future of the property. And I'm very pleased with the progress that's been made so far. On the infrastructure side, there have been several projects completed and our infrastructure committee continues to work on plans for the next five, 10 and 20 years. As for the business side, we've been working on branding, website and social media, which is on target to be released at the end of this week. We have a large LED programmable road sign that will be revealed prior to July. And we are also preparing a sponsorship campaign to showcase our vision for the grounds, identifying opportunities for local businesses to get involved in our new adventure. And Horizon Bank has already stepped up to the plate with funding for the new LED sign, and we're looking for more businesses to do the same. Some of the events that we're looking to bring to the grounds in the fourth quarter are a monster truck show, Indiana Tractor Poliers event, and the Magic of Lights, which is a one and a half mile, uh, drive-through custom-designed Christmas light event. I'm in contact with promoters and organizers out of Chicago who are anxious to see where we're headed and what improvements we're looking to reveal. Now, you might ask, why are they so interested? Well, because of routing and potential. So I'd like to give you a quick little lesson on large-scale entertainment and how this works. Existence of a concert or a large festival at any location is determined through two channels, routing and amenities. Routing is the selection of a path between networks. And Lepore is fortunate enough to be located right between Grand Rapids and Chicago or between Detroit and Chicago. We are in the perfect location for a regional or a national act to make a stop between these two large cities. We are ideal for this. You didn't even know it and we didn't have to do anything in order to get there. So one problem solved. The other determination is made through available amenities. So questions that organizers and promoters are going to ask to determine if we are feasible to operate with, um, a kind of a checklist. Does the location have enough electric, enough parking, enough support staff, sound systems, pleasing buildings and grounds, plenty of restrooms, opportunities for vendors and concessionaires? The more structurally sound and the more updated amenities that we have to offer, the more quality opportunities will come our way. And this is where we have to continue moving forward. We've piqued a great deal of interest with what we have to offer so far, but if we don't make further improvements and add to our offerings, these promoters and organizers will go to another facility in Northwest Indiana that is already the full package. I fully believe this. I, I know this to be a fact. Um, in addition to that, sponsors are looking to see what improvements we're making and how we're moving forward, in which direction we're headed, to determine if they feel secure enough to support us in this endeavor as well. I want to see numerous large-scale events come to our grounds. I want us to thrive and to succeed. Great headway's been made already, but there's still work to be done if we want to fulfill those goals. I believe everyone here knows the potential that the grounds carry and so do the businesses and residential members of our community. It has sat quiet for far too long and I look forward to seeing where we can take it. Thank you for allowing me to tell you where we've come so far and what we look forward to in the future. I believe in a lot of communication to keep moving forward and to make progress. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Susie? Questions for Larry?
Help me understand this again, because now we're talking a five, 10, 20-year plan. So what, we've got 625,000 that we've already sent out there. What have we got fixed that I'm not aware of? You, you know what we fixed so far?
Okay, Councilman Connie, what, what the initial money was used for is a lot of the, um, what you don't see. I, as we say, it's infrastructure underground. They, this. of the, um, what you don't see. I, as we say, it's infrastructure underground. Stay, this, uh, was tied into city sewer, so that got run through the ground, so you didn't have to worry about septic systems. City, city water was tied in, so that got tied in, so that all the vendors and everything are on, uh, normal water. We don't, we have no more well water out there. Um, with, uh, one of the big things was underground electricity. We tried to get, now that's not, the high voltage is, is still from the roadway into the main road of the grounds. It's in the parking lot, so that did not, that portion did not get put underground, but once you got into the grounds, everything inside is underground, it, it's, their tie points are on the poles. Those are, uh, areas in which still have to be done, but the goal is to do it in, in phases. The majority of the wires are all underground except for the, um, with this sound system wires right now. So it, the, I will say, a lot of the, um, high dollar with the electric, water, and sewer were already completed in that aspect.
Okay.
One of the things that, like I said, when I say electric, the secondary electric part was not done at that time. We did the high voltage part. Bath, bathrooms, we're still working on upgrades in those. Um, we did have a bathroom that was over by the, I mean, you've been out there, the bathrooms by the, um, grandstands. We actually demolished them. We took them down. It's, it's in design stage of redesigning a new bathroom area there, so that we can be upgraded to, for, uh, um, once we get into the area of what we want to do in the grandstand area. The goal here is not to just throw something up, like it's always been on the past, put some planning stage, so to see where we're going, what we're doing in that area, then put it up, so it works within what we had, we're going to do there.
And, and we are looking for a, a joint venture on that bathroom. When we do it, we've talked to the fair board, we've talked to Pioneer Land about doing a joint to, uh, everybody throw in on that. So we, we try to get as many, uh, sponsors as, as Susie mentioned. Uh, we've got, we actually, she had people calling her saying, we'd like to come out and sponsor, um, the grandstands, and it's like, well, how much do you want to do? And they're like, well, you know, shoot us the big one, and we'll see what we can afford. If not, maybe we'll look at some other building or something. So we're looking at every option we can out there, and the whole idea is eventually for, for FMEC to be self-supporting, to run the grounds, so that there's stuff going on out there aside from the fair. You got to understand, FMEC has nothing to do with the fair itself, although a lot of things that we do, the fair board benefits during the fair, because it makes things nicer and, and better and easier for everybody to, to, to get out, to come out there. But, um, so, so far, when we hired Susie, um, that money is coming out of a, a money, we're able to generate some money. We got some rental incomes, different things, and we're, uh, partnering with the fair board on some fees that they pay us on what they bring in. We get a portion of what they bring in. So we're, our administrative costs are not spent on this. All this money is for infrastructure, so...
And one of the things I want you to realize, we aren't just going in and tearing down the buildings, okay, just because they look bad. The, the buildings out there have a lot of good bones to them. They, there's some good foundation there to work off of. So, you know, instead of let's just tear a building down and throw a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar new building up, we're, we're working at a goal of, if it only costs us a hundred and ten thousand dollars to redo this whole thing and have it, it's going to last us twenty, thirty more years. That's the goal that we're trying to go with there, where it's not costing as much money.
Right.
We can do it and get it done and still have a good structure there that people can still enjoy.
Painting them instead of re-siding them, this, I mean, it's huge money.
Yeah, I mean, there's just, it's just things like that, that, you know, trying to get done.
Any other questions, Councilman?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So, so I understand this correctly. In two thousand and eighteen, we designated a hundred and twenty-five thousand. From that point till today, we've, we've given them six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You came on with the county in twenty nineteen.
Yes.
So the bulk of the five hundred thousand has been spent on the year administration. Is it possible for you to give us, like, either map it out or somehow tell us which each stipend that you've gotten, what the improvements have been? Is, is there a way, like, to map out the count, the actual grounds, and say, okay, well, we ran electric from this point to this point, and this is what we got for eighty-five thousand, and then, you know, forty thousand went in toilets, and ten thousand...
That map kind of does it.
Yeah, the map does it, and...
He'd have to bring it out each year.
A, a lot of, a lot of it wasn't done under, under me, though, that it was done prior to, um, because I, I was just actually brought into it last year, okay, Councilman Graham Ros, and what, so I can answer from January of last year to now. I could give you that, because I, you know, and we, we did those improvements in fe, in fencing. We've tried to get this, the, the grounds so that they're sealed up, because one of the big things we have within those grounds is we get a lot of people that just go out there in the middle of the night, and they drop stuff, they dump stuff, they use it as a good dumping ground. So, my goal was to try and get this, that portion of it taken care of. We've had to put a new air handler in at the front community building that, that went out. So it's been a lot of things like that that we've taken care of, you know, under, under, quite a few more things I'd have to...
We can work on much.
I can work on getting you that.
Would anyone tell us, could anyone tell us what was done?
We can, we can get you, we can get you something pretty quick.
Yeah, I can, we've got it listed out, everything that was done last year, and I, you know, we...
We would obviously be, I mean, it'd be some work, but not too much work. We could obviously dig back to the original appropriations and the minutes and see what they were for. We can't do that tonight right now, obviously.
Right, right, right. I'm just saying for the future, to give us a better...
But we have the dates, uh, we have the dates of the authorizations of the previous one twenty-fives, and could find those council meetings and find out what those are for.
I've got everything, Doc. I soon have front of me.
No, 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 I'm not asking for today, but I'm just saying, you know, if you could come back to us.
Yes, yes.
And one of the other things we'd like to do, and we've had an awful lot of workshops, so I kind of hesitated on the workshop when Larry requested it, but we'd like to have a workshop out there with the commissioners and the council, just to walk around and take a look at things, uh, before the fair, so that...
And once, and at that point, I can have a complete list together by then, and with the work of Otter Stables, I think we can have it from day one, pretty much, I think.
And so my second question is, this is the second, uh, second, this would be a second request of a hundred and twenty-five, so we've already gone through a hundred and twenty-five this year?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, it...
Correct?
Yep, yes. Yep, yep. Actually, you're, I've got remaining for the twenty twenty-one budget exactly, twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars and seventy-one, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars, okay? And you don't have that exact, because I've got everything that's got to be paid out yet, that's, so your number and my number won't match.
I was freaking out there.
Yeah, no, I just, I knew I prefer to say that, because what we do is we've got all the projects that have to be paid out yet, so we're, that's where we've gone down to, and a lot, pretty much everything's got to be done within the next month and a half, because construction on the grounds, we, we always stress, is done by June first. With fair starting ju, first of July, we pretty much want to stop everything June first as close we can, and then we pick back up right after fair. But there's a, like I said, there's quite a few things that we need to take, we'd like to get improved before the fair.
And with this, with the vaccine clinic being out there, and how they kind of put a snafu on any rental income and anything else, so, um, which the vaccine clinic takes priority, we're, we all agree on that, but, so, as soon as the vaccine clinic moves out the twenty-seventh, they've got a lot of work that, we've got a lot of work to do out there, so...
It's a lot of hands-on.
And how much money did we put into it last year?
Hundred and...
Well, it would have been the, the one twenty-five.
One twenty-five, I believe, is it?
Yeah, one twenty-five.
Yeah.
The year before that, I think we did two draws.
It was two draws in twenty eighteen of one twenty-five early year, mid to late year, one twenty-five in twenty nineteen, one twenty-five in twenty twenty, one twenty-five a month or two, a couple of months ago this year, and now the current request.
I'll stop by your office, because I'd like to see it, like, in, in black and white and writing, and see what...
Yeah, last year, with nothing, with the pandemic and nothing going on out there, it was pretty, we were shut down, we were shut down there, so we were just doing, you know, regular ma, maintenance and trying to take care of things out there la, last year.
Yeah, but we're putting money into it. We didn't have, we weren't drawing any money from it last year, and we're still putting more money into it, so...
But, but we, we did, we did receive pretty good return from the profit sharing that we have with the fair board on winter storage, uh, different other projects that they've been doing out there. So we were able to, we're able to cover all our administrative costs, so, and then some, so...
Last question, it's for the President. Can you tell me of the ten commissioners and council members who's on the FEMC board? Just our representation.
Myself and Mr. Rosenbaum.
And from the commissioners?
Um, Councilman Haney. Commissioner Haney, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't mean to demote you there, sir.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I may make a comment, a very limited comment, but I cut the comment nonetheless. Uh, my, if I make a, may make a recommendation as to the council's consideration around this issue, to the degree that the FMEC is trying to become self-sufficient and a private entity, um, my, my, my professional recommendation would be to study, uh, not how to vote on this, that's not my recommendation, but to study, hence your idea of the workshop, but not wanting to have too many workshops, to study, um, return on investment and potential return on investment, and get a good faith, do a good faith analysis of whether or not these investments made have a good chance of getting the returns that the professional, uh, the executive director, I believe, um, has said. Uh, you almost have to look this, look at this from that, in my opinion, from that, from that perspective. I don't have a direct answer to that. That's your jobs, but that's my recommendation.
And, and we have, with the meeting with the promoters that are out there and the people that are interested in coming out there, these are the things that they're saying, if, if you have this, we can, we can do this for you. So, um, absolutely. Thank you, Tim. What's your pleasure?
Mr. President, motion...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, motion by Mr. Molnar, seconded by Ms. Bugowski. Is there any other questions or comments?
One last comment. Irregardless of all of the other issues, it is still the county fairgrounds. If we're only using it once a year for one week, it is still the county fairgrounds. And I don't think there's many people in the county who want us to abandon it or let it go into more disrepair.
And the whole purpose of FMEC, Councilman Cunningham, is so that it's utilized outside of that one week a year.
Exactly.
And it's, and it's bringing in, you know, people for entertainment, for economic development, and all kinds of different things, so... All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed. Was that a yea or nay?
Thank you.
Mr. Molnar?
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I made the motion.
All right.
Aye, yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Lepore County Coroner requesting permission to spend out of the coroner's non-reverting fund for office furniture in the amount of two thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-one cents.
Mr. President, motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions or comments? And just, I'm going to say...
Just one question.
Here it is. He's going to, go ahead.
Oh, just, um, uh, did you go out and, uh, check the fairgrounds? I know that furniture's probably all gone now, but did you make an effort to go out there and see if you could, um, find a desk or two?
I did, I did, sir.
I know you're requesting for two desks now.
She, she did. That's what I was going to say. I, I knew she went out there and checked, and I think you got some items from out there, didn't you?
Yes.
Yeah. We'll have to have Larry publish a, uh, list of our inventory that's left out there. It's getting pretty bad. Zero? Oh, nothing was...
Sheriff's and Fallon County?
Yeah.
Okay, may I say something before there's a vote on this? I'm also on the agenda a little bit later, asking for additional appropriations, and it was left off of the agenda, the other part of what I want for, out of my non-reverting fund.
Mm-hmm.
Can we do these at one time, or...
You can stay there, and we'll, we'll, if, if there's no objection, we'll pull you off the last one, so... Long as you promise to stay here for the rest of the meeting. You can't leave. Just kidding.
Been a long day.
Um, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's, let's go to the last item without objection under appropriations. Lepore County Coroner requesting additional appropriation from CCD or Riverboat or General for computers and printers in the amount of twenty-eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents, and I did speak with, um, Darlene Hale earlier. Uh, I know she did go through her for these, so...
And actually, what I'm asking for, the amount is fifty percent of the total bid, which I received from Darlene, with, from ADS. Uh, the other fifty percent would be coming out of my non-reverting fund as well.
But you...
So the twenty-eight, eighty-four is fifty percent of the total bid, and the other twenty-eight's coming out of the non-reverting?
Yes.
Right. How come you didn't add that to your...
That's why I say, I don't know why it wasn't, because I asked for it all at the same time, so...
All right, just ask.
Aye.
So what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilwoman Graham Rosso.
Just need to pick the fund.
Yep. You got a fund you want to use there?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments?
Is that, is, I got a question. Is that, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, is that, uh, one computer, right, and, and printer?
No, it's, it's two computers, one printer, and a laptop.
Right. It's a computer for...
Why would, it, why would you need two computers in there? Can you explain that, and a laptop?
Because, can I, you mind if I...
Go ahead.
Uh, it was explained to me that the director has one, because they don't have, they've never had computers. The director has one. There's one set up so that when other corners come in to do reports, they have the software now to do it. They can sit there and do that. They don't have to share a computer to do it. It's a terminal that's there, and then there's a laptop, so they can take it out and use it in the theater. So they never had computers, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? There are none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes. So now, correct me if I'm wrong, we need to approve twenty-eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents permission to spend out of our non-reverting fund if she's going to buy...
You can.
Well...
Uh, her, her, your, your request is, is the courtesy, right? It's not, you don't require council approval, but you're...
But I still have to...
You're presenting to them.
Present to them.
But she, we just approved twenty-five hundred dollars for furniture out of a non-reverting fund.
Permission to, uh, to spend out of a non-reverting fund, the remainder amount for the computer.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments? There are none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Now you're official.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Lepore County Highway Department requesting permission to spend from LIT to purchase a superior broom.
It's no big deal.
It's a side cast sweeper.
Wow. Correct.
In the amount of forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. That must be a heck of a vacuum.
It's, uh, yes, um, Dwayne Warner, Superintendent of the Highway Department. Um, basically, it's a machine that we use currently. Our old one is an early nineties model, pushing thirty years old, uh, irreparable. It's pretty bad. Uh, this machine here is going to replace that. We use it, uh, quite often in our road program. Um, what we do is, in, in order to prep for the roads for paving, we cut that berm off the side of the road, get that for better drainage for our new roads, to help preserve our new road longer. This machine, after we collect all that material, we use that to broom and sweep the road clean, so it's prepped for paving. Um, this year also, we are going to be doing a little more. We're going to, not only doing a road program, we're going to do a road maintenance program. Um, that being said, we're looking at about a thirty miles of chip sealing this year. Um, the, the idea behind that is it preserves the roads to extend the life. Um, typically, Typically, a roadway may last 15, 20 years. By doing a chip seal program like this, it'll extend that anywhere from five to seven years. The whole thought process behind this is, is because we have approximately, pretty close to 1,100 miles of roadway within the county. And if we're only paving, for instance, say 20 miles per year, well, for 20 miles per year, if you only have a life expectancy of 20, you're, you're only getting 400 miles done. You'll never get caught up within the county. By doing this, it extends the life, gives us a chance to keep our roads in a lot better condition and try to make the roadways a lot better within the county. With that being said, we're, with this extra mileage we're gonna be doing, we also are gonna do, doing birmingham on these roads also. One of the issues we've had is with, you only do so many miles a year paving, we don't get to a lot of these roads to get that berm cut off. This is gonna help significantly within the county, getting a lot of this drainage issues that we have. This machine, then, will also berm those. It cleans the roads, preps them for the chip seal. Once that chip sealing is done, this also then sweeps the excess stone off there also. So it'd be a very multifunctional tool. I say the one we have is 30 years old. We don't even get parts for it anymore. A lot of it's, the air conditioning doesn't work. Um, it's in a self-enclosed cab. Our workers are subjected to a lot of heat. The, there's a lot of dust in there right now, that, you know. This new unit will keep that atmosphere clean. A lot of our employees are having a lot of issues with it, it's so dusty, and it's, it's just for the health and safety of our workers also, so.
Just for a, a question. You said 1,100 road miles? Isn't it 11? It's more than 1,100 road miles in there?
Uh, it's right around 10,050 some.
Right. You said 1,100.
Or 1,000, sorry, 1,050, yeah, road miles. Not lane miles, just road miles.
Okay, right. Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Comment real quickly while he's there.
We got him.
I happen to be out in the area of 400 North and Johnson Road when your guy was out there maybe two weeks ago. And he had to go through there three or four times just to pick up the sand, which I can tell you, anybody that's ever been on a two-wheeler, all that sand left over from the winter, if that doesn't get picked up, that's a serious problem. When they're going around there from Johnson Road trying to get out on 400, there's a whole bunch of sand there. That's an accident waiting to happen. So I appreciate the fact that they were out there. I, I realized that he, I was sitting in a parking lot at the bank, and he had to go back and forth three or four times to pick it up, which I'm sure this new one, you go right through there and continue on.
Actually, this, this one that I'm speaking of now, it, it doesn't contain the sand itself. That, we have a road sweeper that, which actually sweeps it up and collects it. This is just actually one to.
Push it off the side.
Push it off the side.
This one, you, the collector was the one that I saw.
Sure, yes.
What's your preference?
Motion to approve.
Oh, thank you. I'll second. Motion by Councilwoman Graham Marosa, seconded by Councilman Graham.
Rosenbaum.
Not to Graham Marosa.
Rosenbaum. Stay with me. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yep.
So this, we're actually replacing it with a new one.
Actually, the one that we're purchasing is actually a used one. Um, it's a 2018 model with approximately 1,100 hours on it. Substantially cheaper than a brand-new one, uh, by, by almost half. So we're just happy with something a few years old. It's, it still has a warranty on it. It's pristine condition compared to what we're used to, so.
So I've been out to the yard, and I've, I've noticed that some of your trucks are in really bad shape. And, um, I know a couple of years ago, we gave permission for you to go ahead and go out and buy two trucks. As we're doing this and we keep on buying older equipment, what is the lifespan on these vehicles when you're buying them like that?
The, the used one, depends on how old the used equipment is. Typically, I, I think I know which ones in reference you're talking about. We kind of got ourselves in a pinch where we needed something right away. It was one where we had a dealership that had them on the lot. They were actually a trade-in model. We needed something right away, so that's, we purchased those.
And they were a couple of years old?
They were approximately, they were about almost nine years old when we purchased them. And so they were not the greatest, but it got us by in a, in a pinch, so.
And where are those vehicles today?
We currently have them up on the hill. They're pretty much scrapped. What happened with a lot of those were the, the, the bodies are the, what gives away. It's not the motors. Usually, it's, you know, the transmissions. It's usually the bodies themselves. When we purchased those, they were used in, in a city, and they were using straight salt. And, you know, of course, over the years, you know, they deteriorate quickly. So once we got those, we got about two years' worth of work out of them, uh, the most, I think it was. Problem being is, what we paid for them and what it would take to get them back on the road, it, it doesn't, it wasn't even making sense. This, the beds themselves deteriorated. Uh, in order to purchase just the bed alone is worth more than what the truck is. And then you also have a truck that's 10 years old by then, and then how long is it gonna last? How much more money we want to put into it, so.
So we got probably about two years, three years' use out of them, them trucks?
Probably about three at the most.
Two trucks. So what is the plan going forward on where we're not buying equipment that we're gonna get a longer life? So you buy this, and this is three years old. What is your, what do you anticipate? Or what is the length that you think that we'll be able to pull out of this vehicle?
As far as, and in the future.
How long will it be able to use it?
How are we gonna start stretching things out? Um, I just spoke with, um, with Mark just the other day, um, in, in relation to where our thoughts were with, with our truck replacement program, and very much in favor of doing, getting something rolling. We've looked at a lot of different options now, you know, what, you know, whether we're gonna lease or we're gonna purchase. But, you know, we kind of spoke where I think we gotta get something in the works and.
I think, I think the question, there's some, uh, he's gonna be coming for new vehicles now, so you're asking. But I think some of the sweeper, though, that makes a little bit more sense to the buy used equipment. I think you're kind of that.
Oh, okay, I see his reference to the sweeper.
You refer like you bought an old truck.
It didn't last long. We only, we only got two, two and a half years.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought maybe she's going towards trucks.
This sweeper's a little different than a truck.
Yes, it's, we only use it during summer, out, you know, months, probably four months out of the year, five, where our trucks we use continuously, day in, day out for 12 months a year. This here, uh, doesn't get subjected to the salt. It doesn't, you know, gets the wear and tear, the hauling. It's basically just the, you know, a, a piece of equipment that we can use. When we're done with it, we can clean it up, put it away, you know, and won't nearly put near the hours on it or the miles that we normally.
And how many years did you have? How old is the old one?
The old broom? It's an early 90s, late 80s, so it's a little over 30 years old. Um, we pretty much got the goodie out of it, so.
So you purchased that new?
Uh, that was way before my time.
That was purchased.
Was it? Okay. Yeah.
Mark was on the council.
Well, I didn't mean to go that way, but.
He was just seeing the truck when the dinosaur was walking past him.
And just remember, he'll remember 30 years from now when you come back for another broom. What the thing is.
Oh, I hope we're all still here, yes.
I'm still here.
Any other questions or comments? There are none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, uh, when are you gonna have, since the price of scrap is up, when are you gonna have a sale?
You spoke on that also.
Oh, never mind.
We, we got some talking done.
Because I believe the price of scrap is up.
Well, there's, I, I, okay, right now, the price of scrap, especially for another one-grade scrap, is up there high. Problem is, we have a lot of stuff that's thrown in the pile, so we're gonna work with them, so we can see if we can separate it. Because somebody's gonna come and just bid this thing, they're gonna get it for a very cheap price, trust me. But if you, if you have regular steel, you just go, you don't have to, you can go right to the scrapyard and sell it for a price that's bearing mark, whatever, whatever the price bears. So we're, I'm asking to try to separate the stuff, because we have tons of steel that are, that are, that are, that will go straight to the mills and be reprocessed.
Sounds great.
Yeah, we kind of got behind the eight ball, you know, so coming into it in the future.
COVID thing was shut down and we didn't, we didn't take care of it.
Moving forward, we're gonna take care of what we got, but then in the future, do our, you know, what we can do diligence to.
Absolutely. I know the price was down quite a bit.
Right now, it's high. We can't get scrap right now. The mills can't get it. Real quick, uh, I was gonna ask the sheriff when he was up here. I, I know that in the past, you've, you guys have been the eyesight for us in the community. Have you noticed trucks are less, less, these heavy load trucks are not, you know, tearing up our roads as much as they were? Because I think, I know, I've heard words got out, and we have a person out there, and I know that, I've heard that some people have said, okay, we can't get away with it like we used to, but.
Yes, we've, our, with our permit program, we've seen that pick up quite a bit. And honestly, yes, it, it has been noticeable out in the community now. I have a lot of guys that call me, trucking companies talk to me. It's like, hey, yes, they're, they're out there. It's in force. I'm very thankful for that program.
Yeah, you guys are eyesight, right?
Oh, boy. Yeah, so, yeah, everybody's a little more cautious on what they're doing now.
All these things, so.
Yes.
Absolutely. Thanks, Dwayne. Next on Monday's agenda is Lepore County Community Corrections Permission, requesting permission to spend from building fund for electrical, lighting, drywall, suspension, drop ceiling in the amount of $45,000. Director Brown, are you on?
I am on. Good evening, how's everyone today?
Good, and you?
Good. My apologies, I'm driving, so I'm not gonna get on the video. But this has been a problem going on at the center for over a year now, um, in regards to participants going from one dorm to another through our ceiling. Two of the, the dorms at the facility have dropped down ceilings in our restroom, in the bathroom. And so that is where they were going in and also putting contraband up there and things along those lines. There was a fix that was done by the maintenance people. However, that was not a long-term fix. And when the building was built, it should have had the same, um, uh, I think it's the cement ceilings as the other dorms, and that wasn't the case. Not sure I wasn't there yet when that happened, so I can't speak to that. However, we need to do a permanent fix, um, so that would include some electrical work, lighting work, uh, drop, uh, drywall, suspension, drop ceiling in a total of $45,000. The advisory board did approve for this, uh, which is why I'm here today, um, asking for permission to spend from the building fund.
Questions or comments? Mr. Yagowski?
I know, um, Ron got ahold of me this week. Um, there was some money that we had put away, uh, for, is this the same building that we were talking about? Yeah. So we had money that we spent to build that came out of Riverboat. And, uh, there was some belief that they could just take this money and spend it. Well, they looked up the information. I know they had the attorneys and everybody else look it up. Fact of the matter is, that money was never turned back to the county like it's supposed to. If they would have, if they would have had a bill or something, they wanted, they wanted to cover it, they could have done that, but they didn't. So, uh, there's a large amount of money that's there in their fund that needs to go back to the county before we even consider anything else here at this time.
Attorney DiMartino, can we make this approval contingent on the return of the other money?
Well, yes. So I looked at, I looked at all the information, uh, for the appropriation in 2012. The only thing that it says is we give $4.7 million to the building fund. They didn't spend that much. They have $160,000 sitting in there.
$158,000, yes.
$158,000. I mean, when, when you look at the, when you look at the, the spirit of this, this is going towards the building. It's needed. The monies do need to go back to the fund. I don't see any problem with, with granting the request of, for permission to spend with the understanding that that other $113,000 eventually gets paid back to the Riverboat. And then if something needs to be done in the future, then they go ahead and appropriate.
I don't, you don't use the word, eventually it needs to go back now, because it should have gone.
I didn't say eventually. I said.
Said eventually.
Well.
I meant after it's paid.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, like.
Contingent on, I mean.
That's what I'm gonna say.
However you want to make the motion.
That's my motion. Yeah. So that's my motion. But that's the money we have to contingent on, on the money first being returned to the county in the general fund. And, and then, of course, we're going to spend the $45,000.
How long has that money been sitting out there?
2012.
It's gonna go back to Riverboat.
River.
Yeah, you said general, so.
Riverboat, sorry. Yeah.
Well, can't we just take the $45,000 out?
Well, that's the way it was advertised.
Right. And let her return the balance?
That's fine with me.
45 and 113, yes.
So you're okay with that?
Yes.
Mr. Yagowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second, seconded, seconded by Councilwoman Graham Marosa. So the motion is, just so everybody understands, is to approve the $45,000 out of the building fund, and then the balance unused money that's still in that account will be transferred back to Riverboat.
Correct.
All right. Can we clarify, I, I'm sorry, can we clarify what's being returned? Is what's being returned?
$113,000.
$113.
Whatever, whatever. You're taking off $45,000, whatever the balance.
Okay.
$113 approximately.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Lepore County Community Corrections requesting to spend from commissary. I think there were some.
Yes, we are, um, looking at a system that's called Guard One, and we're gonna be using, um, the pipe system for extra, of course, safety and security at the facility, and also accountability for our staff to do rounds. It is like a monitoring system that I will be able to monitor as well as, uh, my leadership staff. I still making sure that those rounds are being conducted properly. Because since I've been there, this hasn't been happening, um, so we needed something in place, uh, when we're not in the building and also when we are in the building. So this will be pulled from our commissary. That amount is $15,747.1. It was approved by the advisory board, um, at our very last meeting. And so I'm here looking for permission to spend, um, that funding.
All right. Thank you, Director Brown. Your pleasure.
Permission to, uh, spend from the.
Fund. Commissary.
Commissary first.
Out of the commissary, I'm sorry.
Motion by Councilmember Yagowski.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Cunningham. Any other questions or comments?
Does Ms. Brown know how much is in the commissary right now, the fund?
Approximately, no, it changes from day to day because we're depositing. We have about, probably about $130,000 in, at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
I can get you an exact amount if you like tomorrow, but that's just a approximate amount of where we are.
All right. Any other questions?
I'm fine with that, thank you.
And what is she asking, what are you asking to spend out of that?
And that is for our equipment and them to, of course, you know, bring all that out and taxes and things like that, or shipping costs, I'm sorry.
Any other?
To point a classification, while I think the request for the building improvements came to the commissioners, I'm not sure that this particular one has been routed through the commissioners before it came to you all. I mean, technically, it should go advisory board, to commissioners, then the council. So just, just wanted to raise that on the record.
So, Mr. Friedman, can we, can we do our part and then can it go back before the commission?
That's fine.
Does that work?
Okay.
Thank you.
Contingent on commissioner's approval.
Right. You're willing to amend your motion? Yeah. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Director Brown.
Thank you all so much. Have a good evening.
You too. Next item on the agenda is Lepore County EMS requesting additional appropriation from CCD or Riverboat or General Fund in the amount, this is for an ambulance, in the amount of $220,823.54. You want to do these separate or all one?
I'd like to do the first two together.
First two together.
So I'd like to make a motion to appropriate from the CCD funds, the $220,823.54 for the ambulance, and also for the ambulance loose equipment, in the amount of $13,890.35.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Yagowski and Mr.. Any other questions or comments?
What fund did you say was gonna come out?
This is gonna be coming out of the CCD for this one, correct?
Yes, that was what we talked about last.
Last, we split.
Last month.
Yep. All right. Any other questions or comments? There are none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Overtime pay in the amount of $90,000, and then also part-time pay in the amount of $15,000. I think you're gonna have to do some talking on this one.
Yeah, definitely, and that's, uh, not a problem. So, um, as I explained to the commissioners, we've had quite an unusual start to our year. In the month of January, we had 12 employees off due to COVID. So this resulted in $15,265.78 worth of overtime to fill these vacancies. Since January, we have not had a COVID-related absence from work or issue. We also, on top of COVID, we have, uh, workers' comp and FMLA. We have two employees who've been, and still are, on workers' comp due to on-duty injuries. We've also had four employees take FMLA with one remaining off work, which hopefully he's coming back to work next week, fingers crossed. He's, we've been trying to get him back. Creates a lot of open positions 24 hours a day that we, we have to fill. Our regular call-offs are at their normal level or slightly elevated. So on top of everything else, our regular call-offs are non-COVID-related issues. And then what's really hurt us is, in the last two months, we've had six employees resign. We've worked really hard the last, uh, four weeks, six weeks. We've been able to hire four of the six, and we're still struggling to get the last two paramedic spots filled. We've had a couple of people come in the door, extended the offer, and they've declined. Kind of at the last tail end of bringing them in, they've, they've declined. So it's been a little bit of struggle. So with that being said, we have exhausted our overtime budget, and, uh, we've been using a lot of part-time. We have a decent part-time roster, but we've exhausted that budget as well, uh, which we rarely ever do. we rarely ever do. Um, normally, we do, depends on the year, normally we come back in the fall and we ask for anywhere between an additional forty and, and sixty thousand, get through the rest of the year. So it's not unusual for our budget to run, run low. It is unusual for us to run short this early in the year, very unusual, so.
And you anticipate this will get you through the end of the year?
That's, that's why we put the number where it's at. Now, I, I mean, if you would like, um, if it pleases the council, like, we could always fund part of this amount, I could come back in the fall for the remainder once I have a, a better number, but this number should get me through the rest of the year. But, and, and you know as much as I do, it, it's a hard number to, it's a ballpark number. You don't know what, what's going to happen over the next seven months, so.
What's your plan?
I have some questions, but I'll, I'll put in a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, while the overtime pay and part-time pay. Sorry, thank you, sir. Motion to approve the overtime, part-time pay out of, uh, general account with the idea that if the money's not spent, it goes back to the general account anyway.
You second that? Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Councilwoman Graham Marosa.
And this is the full amount?
She, she, I think she has a question for us.
Right. Thank you.
Did you have a question?
So I do, so what, basically what you're telling us, because you haven't been able to hire the four people that you've lost, that's why you're, you have an increase in overtime?
Well, it's a combination of all this combined. The twelve employees from, from COVID in January, that started off our year on the wrong foot there, with filling that many positions, we struggled really hard. The workers' comp, the FMLA, then our normal call-off that we deal with every year, which usually ends up shortening us anyway on a normal year. Then on top of that, we had the six employees resign. And even when we fill that, that position after somebody's resigned, we have several weeks of orientation to get through where we're still filling that open position until they're freed to go on their own and then fill that vacancy on their own. So, um, which we've filled four of the six right now. We're struggling to fill the last two paramedic spots. Paramedics are very hard, hard to get in the door these days. Pay is very competitive, and, um, you know, the, the, um, there's actually a shortage of paramedics in the state of Indiana and actually national, nationwide. So it's very hard to, to bring paramedics in the door. So we, we're doing everything we can.
Any other questions or comments?
Question, Mr. McGuire, uh, of the six employees that resigned, did any of, any of those go to neighboring agencies?
Yes. Um, two of them went to Valpo Fire Department, one went to Portage, one started his own lawn care company, uh, actually didn't start it, but wanted to do it full-time. Um, and one went, uh, slightly out of state to a helicopter service, so he's a flight medic now. And one, uh, went to Texas to attend, uh, a school down, down in Texas.
Any other comments? There ain't none, all in favor say aye.
Can you repeat the motion? Can you repeat that motion? Is it for the ninety and the fifteen? I couldn't hear it all.
Yes, Mr. Mulholland. It's, it's coming out of the general fund, so whatever remaining amount will go back to the general fund.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Lepore County Information Technology requesting additional appropriation from CCD, Riverboat, or General for computers for human resources in the amount of eighteen hundred and five dollars and ninety-nine cents. This was, we gave a motion of support last meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Ball, seconded by Mr. Mulholland. Any other questions or comments?
I, I just need to add that it wanted to come out of the general fund.
Out of the general.
And this was for the laptop that just died.
HR.
In HR.
Yep. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Any, uh, counsel or attorney comments?
I have a.
I got, whoa, whoa, yeah. I know, I knew you had a comment. I got a comment, too. Go ahead, Mr. Cunningham.
Uh, well, first of all, I would, um, I don't know whether this needs to go to a committee or, or, but I do have a question from, um, regarding shift differential. We have, uh, at least four units that are operating twenty-four hours a day, and it's come to my attention that we have shift differential and percentages, in some cases flat, in some cases, and no differential in other cases. Seems to me that we should have somebody, some type of committee. So I would ask the president to see if he can put together a committee and get us some information for the near future.
Wouldn't that be the personnel?
Personnel committee. Wonderful.
Yeah, that would be great. That's a good, good idea.
And then, um, secondly, I would like to, uh, my good friend Mark Yagowski sitting here, there was a headline in the paper a couple weeks ago, maybe last week even, said, uh, "Councilman to auditor, shut up." And as I read this story, he didn't actually say that, he said, "Put up or shut up." So, uh, my, um, comment this evening would be, "Councilman to auditor, thank you. Mr. Stamos has accomplished something in less than four months, what former Commissioner Ken Layden and myself and many others have tried for over a decade." And, uh, Mr. Yagowski's statement in that story was, "Put up or shut up," and I think Mr. Stamos has put up by citing the IC codes involved with both expedited pay and fully itemized statements. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. I have a comment, does anybody else have a comment?
I'll go after you. I'll go after you.
I just want to encourage everybody to, to, uh, get the vaccine. Um, I've been working very close with the, uh, health department, with Health Link and everything else. So regardless of your political affiliation, and, uh, Mayor Dermody today on a call said it best, he said, you know, it, whether it, the vaccine and, and COVID is not political because, I mean, President Trump took the vaccine and so did, uh, President Biden. So if you're doing it because of one side or the other, it makes no sense because the leader of both sides took the shot. So if we need to get vaccinated so that we can get out of this, because it's, it's, as you've seen, the numbers are getting worse again, it's not getting better, so, um, everybody kind of got relaxed and, uh, so, um, I encourage everybody to get a shot for everybody else.
Okay. Um, under the American Rescue Plan, there's supposedly quite a bit of money, millions of dollars coming to us to be spent. Uh, I had mentioned in the press, and I, and it's been echoed by other leaders in the county, to start getting a committee together, and let's get this rolling and figuring out what we're, what we need to do and where we want to go with this. And so I know I would like to be part of it, but I'd also like to make sure that we get this going sooner than later, because we're, otherwise we run into special interests being far ahead of a global interest, and that's what I want to avoid.
Absolutely. Yep.
To add to that, um, I saw part of the Michigan City Council meeting the other night, and as part of their projected funding, I saw where they could spend up to thirteen dollars an hour for bonus pay for, um, any officials they deemed essential. And, um, I just want to go on record this evening, if I had to make a decision of one person in the county that's probably gone way, way beyond their, uh, duties, and that's Mr. Novak, because of all these weekly meetings he's done for over a year, and I know he wouldn't take the bonus, so I'm going on record right now saying that I'm not going to vote for anybody to get any bonus money. I'm not, um, I don't think any of us can be guided and say, "This person's essential and this person's not," start giving away money directly to people. So I personally want to get on record right now so I don't have to listen to that debate with constituents. And but, and I want to thank Mr. Novak for all the extra work he's done with twice-a-week COVID meetings and, uh, the courthouse meetings and so forth. You've extended yourself beyond belief for, uh, president of the council, I appreciate it.
Appreciate that. Just for the record, how much are we talking about? Just kidding, just kidding. Just kidding, of course.
It was more than double the salary, let's put it that way.
Obviously, nobody up here is, is in this for the pay, so, uh, and it's, uh, I'm glad we're making some progress. Any other comments?
I guess the committee.
What?
Committee, that's a good idea.
I think that is, we need to get that.
I called this week, too.
You know, um, what about a workshop instead of a committee? Because workshop, we can have everybody.
We should have a whole workshop so that everybody can understand what the laws are because they are very complex.
Right.
And there are many different workshops or, or things that we can watch, whether it be on a YouTube or, and there's been other, there's been other sessions by various groups, some special interest groups out there. So it's kind of funny. So we really need one of those, as a workshop as a whole, but then I think we need to narrow it, not have ten people looking at it, have fewer people look at it, so that we can have a better focus.
Right. All right.
Mr. President, I'll, I'll forward to the, to the council, the working group that the commissioners appointed last Wednesday, and of course, there's council representation on it, but there is a working group for the American Rescue Plan that involves, uh, members of the community and everything else. So I'll, I'll make sure that all the, uh, council members get a copy of this.
Got it. Thank you, uh, Mr. President.
So will they be reporting, will they be reporting to our council? Because I know that there are other, um, groups that you have already in place, and unfortunately, it doesn't get filtered out to everybody else.
I know. Well, this particular group, I mean, the commissioners brought it up, and Commissioner Haney could probably address this as well. I mean, it's composed of council representation, commission, CBB, uh, the planner, Office of Community Development, financial community, ag community, business community. So I, I think the group will like the composition, but I'll let Commissioner Haney address it if you would.
If you don't mind, sure. I, I believe what we voted on was a kind of recommendation and a kind of starting area. I don't think we actually formalized any committee or anything like that. We just kind of laid out some, will be nice to have, so to speak. So it wasn't actually anything formal that was created, it was more of a recommendations, maybe something that we'd like to see.
Sounds great.
And then will you be reporting to the different entities on how much will be spent and where it'll be spent?
So we, we didn't necessarily finalize any of that, it's more of a overview.
We're the only ones that can authorize payment.
Right.
But you know, we have, we, right now, we currently have a subgroup that works on the county, um, courthouse in Michigan City, and do we see what gets spent and how it gets paid out on a monthly basis, or?
The auditor, the auditor can give you a weekly.
Yeah, but they're not actually coming to us and reporting it.
They don't have to.
Well, they don't have to, but, okay, so is this going to be the same situation where they're not going to have to either?
We authorize them. They're just going to come and suggest that, but it's all they're going to do.
And, and Councilwoman, to answer your question, you're absolutely right. And no matter what the working group is, the final appropriation has to come through the council for any ARP funds.
Wonderful.
Uh, I would just suggest, very briefly here, because I know you, everyone wants to go home, that I had brought this up during department head reports at the commission meeting, and I'll bring it up here. Um, the city of Lepore, as you saw in the media, is spending fifty thousand dollars to, to consult with Baker Tilly. A lot of people have distaste about using consultants on figuring out how to spend money or ways to do it. I would just point out that this council should, I might want to consider that, the commissioner might want to consider, uh, because when you're talking with, about that amount of money, twenty, twenty-one million dollars, you're talking about less than one percent of that being spent on a consultant. There's a lot of advice that they can give as to how you leverage it, can you leverage it, selling bonds, can you, you know, the different ways that you can utilize it most effectively. So I think that's something with you being the fiscal body here, you might want to consider. I can send out a, a memo from Baker Tilly that would outline scope of services, um, to you if you would like, I may just do that regardless, so you can.
And with all due respect, I think that decision on, on retaining a consultant will probably come through the commission.
Of course.
Certainly get the Baker Tilly proposal, but we're suggesting that there be at least two or three proposals given to the commission that they can choose from.
Thank you. And just from my standpoint in the commission to, to, uh, address your concern, Councilwoman, uh, I, I would like to make sure that whatever committee or group is formed with this, every single dollar is brought forth before the council for approval, uh, just to kind of avoid some of the concerns that I've had in the past over the COVID committee. So I'd like to have the full council have full purview over that to make sure those checks and balances are maintained for the full twenty-one million that we're going to be getting.
And that's the second, uh, little group that we don't get to see what the breakdown is, and, and I think it's important that they have to come back and report and see where money's being spent. We shouldn't have to go to the auditor and dig for the money to find out where it's being spent.
And Councilwoman, we'll make sure a copy of the ordinance that was passed by the commissioners on both readings, which makes it very clear, every last dollar of ARP funds has to come through the council, gets to you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So, Councilwoman Graham Marosa, I will request that the meeting that we have with Ton and Blank on Mondays, that they send out a, what has been spent of the building fund, where they're at? I don't tra, I mean, it, it, it doesn't mean no good to go, okay, here's where we're at. We're on budget, that's what they say. So whether they've spent eight million of the twenty-seven, it, it's not relevant to me as to where they're at in the project. You see what I'm saying? So for me to just tell you that, but I will have them forward to all the council members everything that they're sending to us. I will have them CC everybody, so.
You read my name, I prefer not to have it.
Well, I'm just saying, if you want it, you're.
If you tell everybody that they're giving it to me, then everybody's calling me and asking me about it. I'd rather they get it from the official sources.
Well, I'm, I will have, I will have, whoever wants it, I will have Ton and Blank send you the, the report. So because they, they send us out, there's also, just so you know, what's the site that they can go to that, uh, Ton and Blank, um, has up there? Do you, I, it slipped my mind.
It's, um, ProCore. Yeah, it's ProCore, yeah. I, I have it bookmarked, the exact site, I don't recall.
So, but that's where it is. So, so I can actually, any council member that wants that, you should be able to log into that, and you can see pictures of the progress and everything that's on there, so, um, is that?
If you don't have access to that, ProCore, I'm sure.
We can get it, right. It's, yeah. So in, in, in there, you can see a lot of the stuff, the status of where everything's at, so you can follow it a lot better. And, and I apologize if we didn't have that there, but, yes, Mr. Redgum.